Welcome to tonight's meeting of the planning board. Please beware of the fire exit which is to your left of this room. In event of emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purposes of a record in minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda, extra copies of which are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or the representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give his or her address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If this case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves, along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to public input, and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input at that point will be allowed. If you will, call the first case, please.
Um, yes, thank you, Chairman. Case number PB 1302-1, upon the matter of request by CP Kelly, acting as agent for Bill Gray's Inc. for revised site plan approval to install exterior patio seating pergola and customer access door on the east northeast corner of the premises 869 East Ridge Road in a C commercial district.
I'm Charles Kelly with CP Kelly. We're representing Bill Gray's for the pergola and concrete stamp concrete patio.
You can give us a little just reiteration. I know you've been before us at the workshop, and I know you've addressed our comments that we gave you at the workshop, but if you'd just give us a brief overview of the things that you've done to modify or amend the plan.
What we did, we went back to NH Architecture and had them show a detail of the column along with the metal fencing that will be going around the patio. It's pretty basic, pretty simple little pergola. I have pictures here, I think you guys still have them. If you don't, I have pictures showing the cultured stone, concrete cap, and the metal fence for the patio.
What were you looking for?
There is, I think it does show on there the size of it, if you move the side, it's six by sixes. Or if you come down here also, new wood post in eight locations, three foot tall.
Yeah, but that's just around the outside of it, isn't it?
Right.
That's just these raised.
That's correct.
So where's the pergola?
The pergola is over the top of all those piers and columns.
Yeah, is there any detail about that on the scene here? Is there an elevation drawing?
There isn't an elevation, it's rough sawn cedar trellis.
You provided us with some photos at the last...
We did, yes, and I actually have...
Which I think represents the...
That's what I want to say, thank you.
I believe we passed them around.
Thank you.
Are these going to be painted or stained, or are they just...
It says stain per architect on the drawings.
Is that enough detail, or... I think the photos can augment the plan as an elevation.
Oh, they're actually on the detail, it does say rough sawn to be stained.
And Larry, I mean, you'll require enough drawings for building permit?
Yeah, I'm looking at the, it says line of rough sawn cedar trellis framing above, paint per architect typical, so.
Yeah, right, and the cut, three of A1, I think it says rough sawn, one by wood trim, board stain per architect. There won't be any paint, it'll all be stained on this trellis.
Okay. What is the tint of the stain? I mean, is it a white stain or a clear stain?
No, it's a...
Cedar type color?
It's a cedar colored stain, solid body.
Okay, alright.
The stain would be consistent with what's depicted in the photo.
It's identical to that right there, yes.
Do you want me to come back to you?
That'd be great, thank you.
Rich Plukas?
My concern at the workshop was to have a cutout of the column base detail, and that's now here now, and I'm satisfied with that. I think the photographs help a lot, and I don't have any real questions.
Ray?
Pete, I don't either. There will be no lighting on the, at all?
As of right now, I don't see any lighting on the drawing, there's just the wall packs that are around there. I think you have some sopit lighting that exists already there.
Okay.
So I don't foresee any new lighting.
Okay, great, thank you.
Bernie? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were...
Thank you, Pete.
Apologize.
Thank you.
Bernie, any questions?
No questions.
No? Any, Jay, do you want to wait a minute?
No, I'm fine, I'm just not, I'm not so, I guess I'm not really an expert on colors or all that stuff, but it doesn't seem like this, the natural wood goes with anything associated with the rest of the building. If it's this, I'm looking at this one right here, if this is the...
Right, this is a cedar tone color, and see that matches the actual building itself right there.
Yeah, I don't see how that matches.
This is a brick building, correct?
Well, it's, I'm looking at these, is the, what are they, cedar shake shingles or something like that?
That's another store.
That's a different store, that's not the store on the right hand side.
He's just using that as a representation of what the trellis is.
That's what the trellis looks like.
Right, right, right. So it's going to tie in with something in the, in the building besides...
Well, I think the building right now, as it exists, is a brick building, so I think the cedar tone color would go well.
I would be of the opinion that brick and cedar wood goes very well together. Okay. This time, I'd like to open it up to public input. Anyone from the public who wish to provide any comment or information may do so. Seeing none, I will close public input portion and bring it back to questions from the board. I would think that in general, in the future, that, just let them know that we would prefer a front elevation that would completely depict what is being proposed there, and we probably should have asked for that at the workshop, or clarified the fact that we would have needed that. I do think the pictures adequately depict what is being proposed from a design standpoint, a color standpoint. I do feel that the stone and brick and wood, the natural, those natural elements do go together, so I don't have the same concerns that Mr. Ritchie might with that, but that's, I'm only one person's opinion. I do think that the metal, you know, the metal would also, is a, you know, good look for the fencing. I do think he provided the concrete, you know, or stone veneered concrete block bollards, which I think provide the protection that would be necessary adjacent to the parking area, which I think is important. I don't know that I have any other questions or input or comments. Jay, do you feel satisfied at this point, or if you're not, you freak too?
I'm ambivalent, but it's, I'm fine.
Anyone else? Any questions, concerns, comments? I think I'm satisfied, I'm glad to see that Bill Gray's is investing in the franchise, if that's correct terminology, but I do think that it's great to see Ice Cream and the Bill Gray's consolidated in one location. I think that that's been lacking from that location, I think that'll help their business.
I think it's a great look to that area, Mr. Chairman, I think they've done great, the colors work from my perspective, just to say.
I believe we need to do Secra, we're looking at a unlisted neg deck on this application. Does anyone want to make a motion for Secra?
I'll make it, Mr. Chairman, I guess, regarding PB 1302, on the matter of Secra, it's an unlisted action, and I move negative declaration.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries?
I'm likely to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to, as it relates to PB 1302-1, upon the matter of request by CP Kelly, acting as agent for Bill Gray's Inc. for revised site plan approval for, to install exterior patio seating pergola and customer access door on the northeast corner of the site at premises 869 East Ridge Road in a C commercial district, I move approval, as shown.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you for investing in Ronaquay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He failed last time to question about where Notre Dame is located.
Notre Dame had a big win this weekend, too.
They did, they did.
You do, you do now know where they're located, do you not?
Do we want to turn this to the other?
I know it.
He still doesn't remember, do you?
I just want to see if the carryover lasted.
He's trying to get it to avoid.
Where, where, it's, see, it's in North Bend, Indiana? No. It's actually in Notre Dame, Indiana.
Really?
They changed it back.
Did they change it back?
They sure did.
Wrong again.
As long as they don't play like they did in that ballgame.
Do you see, do you see the, you see the helmet he's got?
I can see that.
That's your nephew's?
Very nice.
He graduated after the London one, the one, the big house.
The next case?
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda is case number PB 1302-2, upon the matter of request by O'Donnell and Associates Inc., acting as agent for Shamrock Jacks for revised site plan approval to construct an exterior patio and facade improvements at premises 4554 Culver Road in a C commercial district.
Good evening, my name is Joe O'Donnell, offices at 150 Versailles Road, Rochester, New York. I am the architect of record for Shamrock Jacks, and we're here tonight to seek approval for the proposed facade upgrades and outdoor patio at the current location at, up in Seabreeze. The location is actually 4554 Culver Road. I put at each of your seats there, a binder, which I'd like to just kind of walk through, it has a table of contents identifying each of the tabs that we've included in here, and I'm confident that the information in the binder and that we're going to review tonight will address any or most of all your questions. Under the first tab, which is tab number one, is my February 22nd, 2013 letter to the planning board, giving a little bit more detail about the project as it evolved through the design process, and also trying to answer the concerns that were raised at the work session a couple weeks ago. As I mentioned in here, the project scope is to upgrade the Culver Road facade of the existing building. We're also going to introduce a vestibule, which will be very helpful in this time of year especially for the patrons that sit adjacent to that door inside the restaurant. That has also been depicted in the latest elevation and rendering. In addition, which would be more for Larry's department, we're going to replace some of the deteriorated wood decking and substructure of the existing porch, namely in that corner where the vestibule is going to go as part of that upgrade as well. One of the big questions I'm sure was, will the patio expand the dining capacity of the restaurant? That is not the intent, the patio is strictly there for a place for patrons to wait for their tables if there's an overflow. It's also an area that you can go out from the bar area and casually sit there and enjoy your cocktails. It is not a proposed smoking area, there's a smoking area existing on the backside of the building, and I think it would be kind of a down, what I want to say, kind of take away from the nice patio outside if there was smoking, if that became a smoking area.
Will it be signed as prohibited, or just passive?
Passive. Did you say passive?
Passive, so you're just going to frown upon it?
I, yeah, I think so, right now. I'm not sure we want to litter that front patio with a, with a sign, but we could do that if we needed to.
If you, if you don't, I think the assumption is going to be, if we can go outside, we can smoke.
Yeah, it might be, it might be right, Mike. So, yeah, we can sign it, we can sign it.
Somewhere, subtly perhaps.
Yep, okay, I mean, because it's, right now, they police at the front porch, people try and go out there now, and they just police it, saying, hey, the smoking area is in the back, so, that's what they do now. Okay, so, moving along, the project specifications, the facade, let me just start with the site plan. What I did in your packages, is if you look through, we can go to the tab number three, and I know the scale's a little small, but what I did was I included the existing site plan as prepared by Clark Patterson, that indicated all of the existing parking, vegetation, grades, et cetera. It showed the setbacks, we have 26.9 feet from the front corner of the building to the center line of the sidewalk. I actually field measured about 25.4, I believe, to the edge of the sidewalk. The second page in tab number three is the proposed plan. I cleaned it up a little bit, just for the ease of reading, took away a lot of the details that were on the original Clark Patterson plan relative to, as you can see, they have a ton of details with the legends and et cetera, they had bollard details and things like that on there, since that was not part of this application, I didn't think it was relevant. But I did change some of the notes, instead of proposed dumpster, it's existing dumpster, but mainly my focus was on where the front porch is proposed. It is proposed to project out 16 feet from the existing building, which would leave approximately nine feet between the leading edge of the patio and the sidewalk, and go across the building, which I believe is 25 feet four inches, to the existing jog in the existing building. The patio is, will be constructed of concrete, I know we've had this discussion on a previous project that I represented earlier this year, because I'm a firm believer in pavers and things like that create uneven surfaces for tables and chairs and things like that, and becomes uncomfortable, and everybody's got napkins stuck underneath legs and things like that. We also are introducing an upgrade to the landscaping around the proposed patio. We are also introducing a new walkway from the sidewalk up to the proposed vestibule as well. And if you turn to tab number four, and I have some large scale renderings of the building as well, tab number four shows what the existing building looks like. The first shot is looking northeast from the corner, the second photograph is looking directly east at the existing building, and then the third page in that tab is a close-up version of the proposed facade upgrade. As you can see from there, we've introduced two patio style doors and side lights into the existing opening, excuse me, of that, there's a bay window there now, that will fit right into that exact opening. But we're also going to introduce two windows on the side, those will actually be windows you can see through. The upper windows will be a Clearstory style window to present the image of a second floor or a higher ceiling area in there, which is a traditional look of some Irish pubs that we've looked at on the internet. And you can also see over on the right-hand side of that rendering, the proposed vestibule, the entrance with the word welcome in Gaelic on it, some little details like that, we think will be a real nice touch as the patrons come in off of Culver Road. And then the last rendering, I know you have to turn your book, but it's the proposed design superimposed onto the front of the building and how it will mesh with the existing building, and also you can see that patio is rendered there as well. Moving on from there, and tab number six is just my architectural detail that I'm starting to develop for the contractors and the mill workers, gives you a little bit more two-dimensional view of the proposed facade upgrade and some dimensions that we're still working out. The existing building is 13 foot six high along Culver Road, and the top of the crown or parapet will be the same, and a 25 foot four across the front, and a seven foot wide vestibule over to the right-hand side as well. What I thought would be a nicer detail was to step down the vestibule, as you can see in the rendering, two reasons. One, I have an existing window on the building that I need to deal with, but also I think it, it's more in scale with the existing house rather than keep it at the same height of the main elevation, which is really what we want, to be the dominant architectural feature. On tab number six, I gave you a small little floor plan, showing the concrete patio, the French style doors are proposed to swing out. I also indicated the band area inside the tavern, I know if any of you have patronized Shamrock Jacks, when there was a band, there was always up front, right where the doors are proposed. Mark, who is one of the managers of Shamrock Jacks, they've decided to move the band area over, and they're going to scale down on the size of the bands for the most part, maybe two to three instrument pieces as well, to keep it more in line with an Irish pub. I'm also introduced a gas fire pit out front, something we would like to have, and I didn't have, I didn't put a detail in that, because that is just something that we would just pick out depending on what the owners' likings were. The railing is a 36 inch high aluminum railing. Mark and I had discussed lately about possibly putting a small ledge on that, I did show a small detail on the site plan of that, but right now, I'm just kind of, I'm showing the patio to completely enclosed. There will be no entrance onto the patio from the sidewalk or from the adjacent lawn areas, you have to go in the vestibule, into the bar, and out those doors to get to the patio, which is in compliance with the New York State Liquor Authority. Tab number seven is the proposed landscaping. This was my landscape architect used an old rendering of the facade, we've, as you can see, Shamrock Jacks has made a commitment to even go above and beyond that and create the rendering that you see in the package, but, in any event, they've introduced the species of arborvitae's on the north side, and I'm not being a landscape architect, the emerald gatees, I think along the front, and the hostas, I'm sorry, the hostas along the front. But your tab number seven includes not only the landscape rendering, but also the specifications for each of the landscape species proposed, and if you would like to look at the location and quantities, those are indicated on the proposed site plan. Tab number eight includes two potential railing selections, again, it's going to be pretty simple, black aluminum secured to the concrete, and that's just pretty straightforward as I can make that. Tab number nine indicates the goose neck fixture that's proposed over the top, we believe four will be enough foot candles to light the front of the building. Tab number 10 is the proposed brick walkway from the sidewalk to the vestibule, and I found this to be kind of an interesting product in that it allows a little moss to grow up through the cracks of the, of the brick itself, which I think creates that nice, if you've ever been to Ireland, you see a lot of those leading into the pubs, so I thought that would be a nice touch as well. Finally, tab number 11 is the typeface that we're proposing from South Paw signage, I've worked with them to develop a font style, which is basically, it's simply called library, I thought it would have been called Irish library or Gaelic library, but it's, it's library, but it's the typeface that you see on almost every Irish pub if you Google any of them on the internet. I know I went through quite a bit of items here, I'm just trying to see if I missed anything, or we can open up the questions from the board.
I saw a small note on here that handicap accessibility is not through this front entrance.
That's correct, there's a handicap ramp on the east side parking lot that's existing.
What is your agreement with the neighbor for parking now for the Seabreeze?
What I'm going to do, Mr. Chairman, if I can, let me turn that over to Mark Petzing, let him introduce himself, and he can answer more operational questions than I can, so.
Just introduce your favorite name and address. I'm Mark Petzing, 83, Duran Drive is where I live in Ronaquay. To answer that question, we have an agreement with them, it's a, we pay $135 a month, and we've been doing this for several years now, seven, eight years maybe, long time.
Mark, isn't there public parking across the street from you?
There's public parking...
Also?
Across the street, yep.
That could be utilized for that?
Correct.
For the facility?
Correct.
Larry, is the parking numbers that are available onsite code compliant? Have you checked, made any...
I have not checked that.
At any rate, we're not...
You're not increasing the...
Not increasing the seating by virtue of adding the patio?
No. They have, they have the onsite, they have the public parking across the street, and they have an agreement with Seabreeze.
Plus, you're getting some more on-street parking?
We will be doing on-street parking up in the Seabreeze area this spring.
And as of right now, the on-street parking will be in front of this establishment as well?
Yep. I think we'll be getting a few spots, but they're based on, you know, fire hydrants and intersections and bus stops and things like that, but there will be approximately 100 on-street parking spaces added to the Seabreeze area.
I've always parked in the Seabreeze parking lot, so I wanted to make sure I wasn't doing anything illegal. Jay, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Yes, I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many seats are going to be outside?
Approximately, I'd have to draw them up there, but it'd be about 16.
But you're not proposing that you're going to be serving out there?
That's correct.
No meals are going to be served?
So no one's going to bring any food out there from inside?
That's, that's the plan.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
That's the plan, but is it going to happen? I just can't imagine it won't happen.
The doors will also be closed in the evening, especially if there's a band or something.
Say, I'm sorry, say again?
The doors will be closed at nighttime as well, you know, in the summer, it'd be nice just in the summer to have it open for the breeze.
I mean, I don't know that we're necessarily averse to having the seating out there, I just want to make sure you get approval for what you need and that it's code compliant rather than...
Just for extra, while you're waiting for a table.
I mean, there's, this, this doesn't seem to be any reason that you wouldn't say to someone, if I ordered an appetizer at the bar, that I couldn't take it out to the patio?
On our old, what we're approved for now, we do have seating on the front porch, so that's an option to give them, and that's already been established, 10 years now.
I mean, is there any reason, I mean, you, I mean, you can tell us, I mean...
We don't, our kitchen won't be able to keep up with, you know, it's, we are, we have what we have, and we're not looking for more, we're not trying to be greedy, we're just trying to do this for...
I think, I talked to Kathy Petzing, who's obviously... I think, I talked to Kathy Petzing, who's obviously here in the audience, she's the owner of Shamrock Jacks, and we chatted about that a little bit, and she said her option would be that she would close off a section of a dining room if the weather allowed for outdoor dining. That way, it wouldn't increase any of the capacity or need for parking, and also taxing the kitchen. I mean, you can only serve so many meals with the kitchen size, so you can almost, you're almost like cutting off your nose to spite your face by overseating people.
Yeah, I'm with Jay. I want to put my hands up and say...
We want you to have seating out there.
Well, the thing is, though, is that if you've got seating out there, and you're going to serve people food out there, then there's probably different rules and regulations that you have to put forth, and I don't know...
I don't know.
I don't know what all of them are, but I'd imagine that it...
I think the main rule is the alcohol rule, and I think that they've done that by enclosing it, but, yeah.
Do you have, the other question I had, I think you answered the ones about the parking. You're going to add lighting, and usually, there's some kind of ISABARs that you put in for photometrics to make sure that the light's not going to spill outside the area. Did you include that anywhere in the packages? I didn't see it anywhere.
No, I did not. Because the intent of the goose-necks is just to wash the front of the building. I didn't think it would be that intense, that it would be...
I think, do we run photometrics on sign lighting? We just generally for building and parking lighting, right?
No, we don't run it on sign lighting.
Right. I don't think these type of fixtures are the type that would actually give, other than...
Doubtful.
Yeah. Any other questions, Jay?
Michelle's just showing me a part of the code, and this kind of came up with Primos last summer with their ice cream, is that "Outdoor seating for restaurants and eating establishments shall be permitted without Board of Appeals consent for up to 20 seats, provided that the approval of the outdoor seating is obtained from the Director of Development Services upon review of setback requirements, life and fire safety requirements, and clearances for ingress and egress. B, it's determined by the Director of Development Services that public convenience and welfare will not be substantially served, and the appropriate use of the neighboring property will not be injured thereby. And C, no additional structures are needed to accommodate the outdoor seating. And D, there is no outdoor entertainment, live or reproduced." So, kind of was Primos with their outdoor ice cream, as long as they had 20 seats or less, that was fine. So your 16 seats is under that threshold. If you want to shut down on a nice day, you want to shut down one of the dining rooms, so, because people want to eat outside, you know, discuss it with the board tonight.
If all of a sudden, an extra cook shows up, and you've got excess capacity, you serve a couple meals out there.
There's the extra cook right there.
I love it.
That'd be me.
I'm still, I'm not, I'm not clear about this. They have to shut down a portion of the dining to, in order to?
No, no.
No, they really don't.
I was saying that...
They can do both.
You can do both, but what I was indicating is that you can't overtax your kitchen, though. You're cutting your nose off.
Yeah, I understand your own limitations, but I don't want you to, I mean...
Well, they now know that they can have up to 20 seats out there, that they could serve, if they sort of desire, with permission of Larry and...
So now that's answered your question, now if somebody wants to bring their food out there, yeah, if we're allowed.
You're good, as long as you get permission from him.
Yes.
Right?
As long as it's not more than 20 seats.
Right.
Yeah.
They only need permission if it's more than 20.
Yes. So, they have four tables of five, or four tables of four, or five tables of, you know, the fire pit doesn't happen, or it moves to a different part, and someone has a corned beef sandwich or something like that, and they want to eat out there with their Guinness, have at it.
I guess I have one more question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Sorry. One of your depictions has what looks like advertising out there?
That was the old.
That was the old one.
That's the old rendering.
That's the landscape.
All right, okay.
Yep, that's...
So there's not going to be any advertisements out there?
You're not serving Jameson anymore?
I think the word "Irish pub," I think the word "Irish pub" does enough advertising.
You'd like Tullamore Dew as opposed to Jameson, so, you know.
Anything else, Jay?
I'm all set, thank you.
Rich?
Just going to tab number seven, I know you said this was an old rendering.
Mm-hmm.
In that rendering, there appears to be steps coming out of the doors.
Yep.
That, and comparing that to the picture in tab number four, it looks like it's on level with the interior floor.
It's on level.
Okay.
I think one of the lessons we learned in doing Titus Tavern, Larry's suggestion, which was a good one, was it's nicer to be propped up a little bit. The grade change there is about 14 inches, I think, so it'll raise that patio up a little bit, it'll be nice. You know, you won't be sitting right at the sidewalk level.
You'll get use of the full 16-foot patio.
Correct, yep, exactly. Plus, quite frankly, my opinion is, I wouldn't want steps that people can potentially trip over as they're coming out.
Also, in the rendering showing the plantings, you've got, looks like some large granite pieces on the corners.
Yeah, that was my landscape architect getting a little carried away.
We like it.
Yeah.
I was going to say, I...
Yeah, but it was a nice touch, but I had already written my, this rendering came in late Friday, and I was already had my packages...
But my point is, I like it, because I think it provides a safety barrier...
Okay.
...for vehicles coming from either direction that are unwanted.
We would, we could put those in as a condition.
I think it's attractive, and I think it's beneficial, considering how close you are to the street.
We thought about bollards dressed up as leprechauns, but...
I like the stones better.
Anything else, Rich?
No, that's it, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think this is fabulous. I think this is tremendous investment in Ronaquay. I think it's been very well done. I love the landscaping, I love the look at the outside of the building. I love the fact that now, according to Mr. Heiniger, you'll be able to serve at least 20 people out there on a patio. I think it's going to be great in the summer, I think it's a great thing to the community. I really do. It's just been well, well, well done. I'm absolutely for this. I love it.
That's a lot of words for a guy who's speechless.
I know.
I had, are you all set, Ray?
Yeah, Pete, I'm sorry.
The rendering showed that there might be gold trim on the addition, but the existing building's trim seems to be, is white. Is that...
Yeah, you know what, Mr. Chairman, we got to look at trying to blend that in a little bit better. I would agree with that comment. In fact, Mark mentioned it to me when he saw the large-scale renderings today, that we would have to either repaint that trim to match that gold, if you would. I'm working on it.
So do you think that the existing building trim, at least at the porch level, would be...
Yeah, it needs to, it needs to get something to make it blend right in, a little bit better, yeah, I agree.
Maybe that cedar look from...
From Bill Gray's, yeah. Yeah, and to be honest with you, I received an estimate just Saturday from Block. I took the rendering and drawings over to them, just to see if we were in the ballgame, and it looks like the numbers are coming back pretty favorably, where we'll be able to expand some of the work along that porch to get it upgraded, so.
I am glad to see a bit of the interior is, as good as some of the large bands are that come to that establishment, it does inhibit a little bit the entry into that filling, and it is probably a little noisier than sometimes you probably, although, at certain times, it's probably appropriate. But, at any rate, I do think that this is a great improvement, it looks like you're really modifying and improving the space, both internally and externally, and I'm all for it.
Will it be ready for St. Patrick's Day?
Next year.
Yeah.
I don't know if we're ready for St. Patrick's Day.
Michael, did you have any other?
I'm comfortable, thank you, after all the questions.
Did you look at the landscaping? Were you happy with the plantings and such?
I typically am, you know, don't do arborvitae, don't do, but I think...
Well, I was just glad to see the arborvitae's weren't on the streetscape, and I think that that's better along the side, as a screening element, versus on the streetscape, and I...
I'm not certain you're really, that's the only side where you have perimeter arborvitae. You could have, from my perspective, continued with the low stuff.
You know, Mike, I did speak to the landscape architect today, because, and he said, "Let's get together, if it goes well tonight, let's talk about heights, and maybe bringing some of that down," because it is, that is also the view of the lake. You do get a glance of the lake from that side.
Yeah.
So, I would be in favor of that, maybe keeping the landscaping low all the way around it. I think it does a lot for people seeing, as you're coming up from Seabreeze, and you see, you know, people hanging out on the patio, rather than hidden behind arborvitae's, might be better. So I would have no problem keeping it all low with the hostas and the other one he proposed.
Either would be nice contiguous around, and arborvitae take a beating, not only on the street, but with northern exposure.
Good, good.
But just a thought.
And the tree is remaining, correct?
Tree is remaining. You know what, I'm glad you brought that, just to jog my memory, the existing sign that's there is going to be moved up onto the lawn area. I did fail to mention that, just so you know. The existing sign is right in the way of the patio, it's just going to move to the other side of the sidewalk in front of the porch, okay?
To the south.
Yes, exactly. So I'm glad you said that, Pete, because I...
Any other questions, Ray, Michael?
No, thank you.
Almost called you Ray again, I don't know why I do that.
I don't know.
I just got the RA part out, but not the... Bernie?
I was just going to ask about the tree, so I'm glad you asked that question, because it kind of moved in some of the pictures.
And last but not least, we will be applying for zoning on Friday for the setback of the patio. So, just, because I know you brought that up in the work session, too. Do we need any other variances? Michelle and I determined we will need one on the north for side setback. I think we're 3.6 feet off of the property line with the edge of the patio, which matches the existing building, so I don't think that'll be an issue, and then the front setback.
Shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah.
I think it looks fantastic, so, and thank you, this is a very nice presentation.
All right, at this point, we will open it up to input from the public. Charlie, you want to say anything? Seeing none, we will close the public input portion of the meeting. And are there any other questions from the board? I was amazed that you were able to bring this up to speed, I didn't think it would be accomplishable. I do think that you've done it.
You did it.
Thank you.
Now that we gave you the compliment, my only request would be that if we could get it a little bit sooner.
Yes.
I think it's very thorough, and I'm appreciative of that, I would have liked to have it...
Now that you've gotten it to us before the public meeting, now we want it before the workshop, so we're going to keep pushing you back, and thank you. We do need to complete seeker on this application.
Is it unlisted, negative?
Unlisted, negdeck.
I can do it. So in the matter of PB 1302-2, in the matter of seeker, it's an unlisted, negative declaration?
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a positive motion, as it relates to PB 1302-2, upon the matter of request by O'Donnell Associates, Inc., acting as agent for Shamrock Jacks, revise site plan approval to construct an exterior patio and facade improvements at premises 4554 Culver Road in its C Commercial District, I move approval as stated.
The three items that I have are to paint the existing trim to match the addition... On the porch, I'm going to say, at this point, at least, I would prefer the whole thing. Add the granite accent stones to the landscape, and modify the north landscaping to match the west landscaping?
To west, right.
Should we mention about the moving of the sign?
It's on the plans.
No, it's not.
Oh, it's not? It was on the original plan.
It was on the original plan, and it says sign to be removed in my proposal.
So you could, if you want to list that, that's fine.
I'm afraid you're going to have to come back before us, I'm sorry.
Is it necessary for us to say subject to zoning board approval as well?
I think that's inherent.
Or is it inherent?
It would be nice if you would recommend the approval to the zoning board.
Yeah, good idea.
I'm saying it's signed to be relocated, not removed. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I vote nay.
You vote nay? Five, one, motion carries.
I'm turning in my binder.
Yeah, I was going to ask, I can use those for the...
Yeah, sure.
You want it fuller in it, though?
Empty.
Joe, I wrote in mine, just so you know.
You want that?
I wrote in mine, just some notes.
I'll just say copy.
Thank you. Thanks for investing.
Thank you for investing in Ronaquay.
Fabulous investment, thank you so much.
All right, Larry, now, I have a question. I hope, here's another one right here, I didn't realize. Next case is currently, what status?
Excuse me, sorry, Mr. Chair, it's been postponed.
Can we continue to indefinitely postpone this application?
Probably not.
Sounds like a question for the...
But I guess I would recommend that if we don't have any action on it by the March meeting, that it be dropped from the agenda.
I would like to take action on it tonight, I would like to deny it without prejudice.
And do it.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
Now, let's lift it from the table, do I have a motion? I'll make a motion to lift it from the table.
I'll second that.
Wait.
I don't believe it was tabled.
I don't believe it was tabled either, but...
And I'm doing minutes, and I don't ever have it being tabled, I just have it being postponed. It was postponed, postponed, postponed.
I move we stop postponing.
All right, we're denying it without prejudice on the motion of McDonald?
Yeah, I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Michael already said it.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none? He will have to reapply.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Is that with or without prejudice?
Without.
Without. Which I was glad to see is actually one of the new checkboxes. Got them all on there. We do not have any meeting minutes or anything to review, correct?
Can I give you my...
Yeah, you did, we do have some, from October.
Did you give us October?
October.
The verbatim ones are killing me.
I do see those.
October.
So we do have meeting minutes, if everyone could take a minute just to take a look at them, if they have not already done so?
We can do it next month, too, Mr. Chairman.
No, let's, we can do them right now.
We have October meeting minutes, is that correct? October meeting minutes.
Correct.
I did read these a week or so ago, and if memory serves me, I would prefer to move favorably.
Okay. I went through them, I didn't really see anything that stood out to me.
I didn't get them, no.
What?
I didn't get the meeting minutes.
Did you? Do you want to look at mine and just take it...
They should have been in your folder when they were dropped off.
They weren't.
I apologize.
He's got a meeting minute dog. It's very selective.
Yeah. He only reads the long paper, he only eats the long paper. You know, why don't you just, why don't you, if you want to approve them, go ahead, I'll just, unless you want me to read them, I can read them if you want.
Just recycle.
I move approval, Mr. Chairman.
I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Palermo was absent, therefore abstaining. Any opposed? Seeing none. Meeting minutes approved.
Question.
Sir?
Will the planning board continue to exist as a six-member board?
I doubt that they would continue, but I don't believe that there's a potential applicant at this point.
Lack of applicants or lack of action?
Lack of applicants, my understanding. So you will continue to exist as a six-person board until we have a seventh person?
Well, somebody out there in TB Land apply, would you?
Is there a recruiting fee or...
We're recruiting right now. What, not better than to have a conservative guy here, conservative board.
Given that?
Conservative is...
Conservative.
Conservation and conservative are...
Given that, Mr. Chairman, I would move no further business.
Yes. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I do.
By McDonald, I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.